I'd like to do the prayer.
I can do it.
Okay.
I've been.
Okay. I am going to call the meeting to order. We are going to start with a pledge led by me and then a prayer led by Darren. If you would all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we're grateful this evening to be here planning commission meeting. We pray that we'll be able to discuss those items which are important to Far West City. We are grateful to live in this community and we pray for all those that live here, that they will be blessed. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, first thing is public comment. Is there any public comment? There's none. We'll move to report from city council.
We had a pretty busy meeting last week, but I'm not gonna bore you with a lot of details.
Thank you.
Public comments, we had a couple. Toby Meliski thanked the city for their hard work and the dedication to serving the citizens. Leanna Brinkerhoff voiced some concerns regarding the River Blacksmith development. And Donald Edwards voiced his support for vacation easement request by Kim Baird. We did not have any business licenses to approve, so we skipped that one. Mr. Larson, who is a CRA Economic Development Consultant, introduced himself to the council and gave us a brief history on his professional experience. Councilman Bland asked what other cities he worked with and that we as a council should be looking forward to working with him. He does have quite a bit of experience and so we're hoping to be able to tap into that. We received a brief report from Chair of the Planning Commission and that you had set public hearing or conducted a public hearing on our River Blacksmith development and public hearings were set for the C2 and C3 zoning ordinances. The council held two public hearings regarding requests for vacation easement on properties of Mason and Toby Meliski. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right or not. Both those ordinances for the easement vacations were granted. City Attorney Liam gave a brief explanation on development agreements, what they are and that they are allowed by the state code and actually encouraged for municipalities to utilize that the development agreements to better provide access for developers in zoning. Mr. Shear from River Blacksmith gave a brief summary on their proposed development and there was some discussion between the council and Mr. Shear. They indicated that they will communicate with both citizens, city engineering, and planning commission, wherever necessary to resolve any issues. I never got anything but a positive attitude towards the whole process from them anyway, so. The council then unanimously approved the development agreement for River Blacksmith. The council also approved a request to rezone River Blacksmith properties to the mixed use zone. So if they could go further with that. Council considered a request for a height variance of an accessory building for Mr. Kim Baird. Some explanation or, yeah, and discussion was involved with Mr. Baird. It was decided that the city council was not the appropriate body to make that decision and he was referred back to the city's official appeal authority. And I don't know, apparently he was able to get ahold of somebody and that's in process. The council approved a thousand dollar donation to the Western Weber CTC Coalition. It's something that the county is involved in with the youth and to promote the youth and their health and well-being. It's not something new to the city. We approved a donation for one thousand dollars for the coalition. Council set a date of June 20th, 2024 for a public hearing to consider the approval of the 2024 budget. We also set that same date for a public hearing to consider approval of an ordinance enacted enacting compensation increases for specific city officers. And that's just actually a formality. It has to be in an ordinance form before those increases can be considered. Council reported on assignments. Katie Williams reported the parks committee met with Big T Recreation regarding upground or playground upgrades for the one that's here at the city hall. She indicated that the Utah League of Cities and Towns were looking for volunteers to participate on the regional council, recreational council, and fortunately she volunteered, so none of us had to. Councilman Bob Lind reported that the CERT renewal training will be coming up in the next few weeks and that things were going well with getting organized in the CERT program. Mayor Pippin thanks Lyle and Lou for their support and help with regarding to the youth fishing club. He mentioned the Memorial Day Ceremony at Smith Family Park was well received and appreciated by the citizens that attended. He's had meetings with UDOT on various items within Far West City and also there is some ongoing training for modern income housing and the reports that are required. We got all through that and adjourned the meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, our first business item is a public hearing to consider the approval of the amended C2 commercial zone ordinance. Is there a motion to move into a public hearing?
On the public, uh, public meeting?
Motion by Greg?
I'll second.
Second by Darren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the C2 amendments? If there are none.
Motion maybe close with public hearing, public hearing.
Okay, motion by Greg. Second by Greg, number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the recommendation to the city council approval or denial of the amended C2 commercial zone ordinance.
I recommend to the city council approval of the amended C2 commercial zone ordinance.
Motion by Darren, second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is gonna be a real fun meeting. Public hearing to consider approval of the amended C3 2700 North Regional Commercial Zone Ordinance.
Recommend we open the public hearing.
Motion by Greg. Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in a public hearing for the amendments to the C3 North, well, 2700 North Regional one.
Recommend we close the meeting.
Okay, recommendation by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Darren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Recommendation to the city council approval or denial of the C3 2700 North Regional Commercial Zone.
Can I just make one comment? I wonder if the citizens of Far West understand the implication of the changes in the C3. I am very much surprised that we didn't have somebody in that public, this public hearing. And the comment is, was it stated just this way or did you bother mentioning that the major change was including apartments?
It probably would have just been.
The point I'm getting at is sometimes I'm concerned that the public doesn't show up because the public doesn't really know what we're going to be discussing. And this one in particular caught my attention. It seems, I'm surprised that we don't have anybody from the public here.
Where, I think where it's not gonna, in that zone where it's not gonna affect anybody really is why. It's not, it's not in anybody's backyard.
No, I agree, but, but the announcement, it's for somebody that doesn't read the municipal code, would they know that?
Probably not.
That's my point. Just a comment.
Yeah, and I just, I don't think anybody's read it and realizes exactly where this zone is or what's going on with it, but.
Well, and there were townhomes previously in it.
I'm, I'm pleased that we can move forward. I will not be surprised if in the future when the public discovers what's happened, that we hear some comments from the public.
And I think part of that falls on the public a little.
Just an observation, yeah.
Yeah. Is there more discussion on this? Is there a motion?
I recommend to the city council approval, whoop, let me see where I'm reading, recommend the city council approval of the C3 North Regional Commercial Zone Ordinance.
Motion by Lou. Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, last item, recommendation to the city council approval or denial for the signs for Costa Vida located at 1655 West 2700 North. So this one, because their signage is actually larger than the Burger King sign, we just felt that to check the box correctly, they needed to come in. So I don't know, I'm assuming you are with Costa Vida?
I'm with the company.
Or, okay, with the, the sign company. If you want to come up and explain quickly what you're doing? And then, do you guys have any questions?
Are they lowering the poll?
No, so they are, well, I'll let him talk. They're just surface.
We're going to utilize the existing circle. The plan is to put a rectangular, I'm not sure if you have it up, rectangular cap just below that.
Give me the mouse, Andrea.
To be the name, and the circle will have
round sign.
The wave logo.
There you go, yep.
And then we planned also get the electronic reader board back up and running.
Okay, so you're not going up with the sign, you're not making it any larger?
No.
It's already there, so.
You're utilizing like the menu boards and everything on the drive, they're the same, same everything, right?
Yeah, the impact on the footprint itself incredibly minimal.
And then there's some signs above the doors, the entrance signs and stuff.
I think that's the only changes you're making is just adding additional signage.
We've got primary identifiers on each directional, each entrance.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing.
I think it looks great.
I'm excited.
Oh, sorry. I should have told you that. And address.
There's absolutely no relation. Nate Blanchard.
Oh, oh yeah, I did talk to you, Nate.
Come to the podium.
I don't know their opening day, but they're fast tracking, they're putting it along and fast tracking this one. So it should be soon.
Yes, the intent, the secret intent is about four to five months.
Well, I recommend to the city council, we approve the sign for the Costa Vida located at 1655 West 2700 North.
Motion by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Darren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're good to go now. You can officially, Nate can approve that sign permit that you had submitted and you can pay the fees and do everything through the, the city now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So let me actually, let me remind you of this, to, or no, sorry, next week, next Thursday, the city council has to give you the final sign off. Sorry, so I take the comment about Nate, you have to wait another week for that. And same time, 6:30 here.
I'll be here.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, consent items, approvals, approval of the minutes dated May 23rd, 2024.
Recommend we approve the minutes dated 20, May 23rd, 2024.
Greg had a lot of time to think in the truck, apparently. You're like on it tonight.
I did a lot of studying.
Motion. Motion by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle.
I, I do have a question. Where are these minutes posted?
They get emailed out to us?
Not to me.
Because you don't use them.
Yeah, because I, yeah.
Well, we should probably tell, what is her name? I always forget it. The new.
Venetia.
Venetia, that he uses the, because you don't use the city web, the city email or something. That's why you're not getting them.
I get some of them.
Oh.
I get things from you and other people. For some reason, I don't get the minutes.
Okay, so we'll just, I'll, I'll ask her to send them.
Can the minutes be attached to the packet, the, the, the previous minutes? Because they used to be.
We could just have, throw them in Dropbox.
Well, Dropbox is fine. I exist, okay, if you throw on Dropbox, that solves my problem.
They probably are in.
Oh, that's, oh, that's true. Yeah, sometimes they, sometimes they would, they used to be put in the packet, but I haven't seen that for.
If you could put it in Dropbox.
Yeah, I'll do that.
That's easiest thing.
Well, yeah, and maybe I just need to forward the minutes now to his.
Well, you can set on his email within Outlook, you can set up a forwarding rule that will say anything comes here goes to, he's using his personal email.
Yeah, that's true. We could figure that because I think it's because of your email is why you don't get them, because I forward stuff to your other one.
I'm, I'm sure the minutes are wonderful. I just, I just like to look at them before I say yes.
Well, no one knew you weren't even looking at them, so.
So I've been blindly saying yes the last few times. And I will do so. And I will do so.
Right, I know.
That's the reason why I haven't been coming. I thought that was intentional.
Oh gosh. Okay, sorry. Is that, was that a motion by Greg and second by Darren? Lyle, by Lyle, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, report on assignments. Greg?
None.
Lyle?
Okay, as Tim mentioned, we had a park meeting last Monday and Big T came in. It was actually Taft Egan from Big T. And it's regarding this playground out here, but it's going to be an all abilities playground. And so the, the estimate he had was quite pricey, actually more than the Mountain View, but that was his most expensive thing. But there was also another vendor, Vern, forgot his last name.
Garrett.
Vern Garrett, yeah, from Garrett Playground. Anyway, so it's still in the works, but we're trying to get a jump on it in preparation so we can go after the grants in the fall. And also we met with the mayor and myself and Katie met with Evan Beich from UORG. We were all under the understanding that, that that grant went through, including through the national parks, and it didn't. What happened is that they approved it through UORG, but now it has to slowly work through the wheels of government. What we've got now is, is, it's got to go through what they call the NEPA scrutiny, which is the National Environmental, National Environmental Policy Act. What it basically says is that they want to make sure that there's no wetlands affected, no historical issues with it. Of course, that playground's been around for years and so it's just a matter pretty much copying and pasting things from our, from our grant. But one thing that I want to point out, which we were excited about, Evan said that out of the entire state, this playground is only one out of five that were approved this year. So that's huge for us.
Awesome.
So anyway, that's all I've got.
That's great. Lou?
Well, today I got the opportunity to participate in an appeal authority meeting. It consisted of the applicant, a representative from Weber County Attorney's Office and myself representing the Planning Commission. Was a pretty straightforward meeting. I met with the attorney briefly before the meeting and kind of gave him some factual background as far as our municipal code and so forth. And then he invited the applicant in, allowed the applicant to make his case, which was very similar to what he had said in the city council meeting. He then reviewed for the applicant the state requirements to grant a variance. And I think all of you have got the list and he read each one of them. And it's an interesting list. There are five requirements and you must meet all five requirements or the variance is not granted. He did not make a decision at that time. He acted very much like a, an attorney. He says, I will take all of this information, prepare my write-up, my report, and then render my decision after that. So we walked away with no decision made.
So was that Liam or a county member?
Chris.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
However, when he started reading the terms required for variance, after he got done with the first one, the gentleman basically said, I, I can see I'm not gonna get it. And he made it very clear. He said, you've got, you know, I got a lot of compassion for your situation. I understand your frustration, but I am bound by state law. It's much like what we told him, we can't grant variances because we have restrictions placed on us. However, in the course of this discussion, it became very clear to me that we need to do some reviewing of the ordinance because, for instance, in the ordinance, it simply sets a maximum height. It does not say how the height is measured. I know Nate measures it from the floor level, but I, today I went and started to look at examples of accessory buildings in a variety of places. The vast majority of, majority of them measure it from grade. And where the, where it becomes an issue, if you're on a flat property, it's kind of moot. If you're on a sloped property, it becomes very different. And he actually gave us an example showing that there was a six foot tall foundation on one side of the building. And I asked him about that. I says, well, because I just talked to Nate, Nate says, no, he measures it from floor level to peak. And it turns out the front of the building, that's exactly right. If you go to the back building, the building sticks out of the ground six feet higher than that. And so I think we need to sit down and decide exactly what we want in this, but I would suggest that we sit down, evaluate it as a bare minimum, clarify the language as to how the height is measured. And quite frankly, I think we ought to take into account the grade. And I've, I've started to compile some examples of how it's worded in other ordinances for that purpose. Talked to the mayor too. We may want to revisit the height itself. That's kind of a magical number. Maybe it's not the best number in the world. So I'm just saying, if nothing else came out of this, I think it points to the fact we ought to reevaluate the height requirement and we certainly ought to make a clear definition of how we go about measuring it.
My conversation was with Nate. He would prefer
grade.
Certain numbers.
Yeah.
From the floor, this high, so that's the 16 and 21, because he goes, that would clear up 90 plus percent.
The, the issue though is, if you, if you have a building that's on a slope, they're gonna, the floor level's gonna be level. If that slope is toward the interior of the property, no big deal. If the slope is facing is towards somebody else's property, it then translates to the fact they are going to be looking at a much taller building than what our ordinance suggests. And one of the main reasons for this building height restriction in the first place is to protect the neighbors that don't want a big building and don't have big toys. So I, I just think we need to carefully think about it. I, I have my own views, but it would be interesting for us to discuss this and, and look at examples elsewhere. And, and if nothing else, make it very clear to Nate, this is how you measure it. This, so his interpretation and my interpretation of height may not necessarily be the same because there's nothing in the ordinance that says from what you measure. Okay, so. And it should, yeah. Oh, I wanna, I definitely.
Yeah.
No, no, I think Nate ought to definitely be involved in that conversation. So anyway, it was, it was an interesting process. Having been on the planning commission when we had a, it was called Board of Adjustments, which consisted of laypeople that had no involvement in the dialogue up to that point, and suddenly we threw them into a decision-making process. This one was much more professional. He collected factual information. He wanted to have all the documentation as far as our ordinance. He allowed the applicant to explain as much as he wanted to explain and try to justify his request for variance. And then he explained the state law, what he's bound to, to follow. And, and we walked away and he said, I will write this up and let you know what my decision is. So I say thumbs up to the process.
I, I would agree with you, Lou. Ninety-eight percent of the time in Far West, it isn't a problem. But there is that two to five percent that we do run into a problem with building height.
Well, when I was living in a flat world, I, I never even thought about.
I haven't been in a flat world for a long time.
Well, no, but I, I mean, I simplistically, when I looked at the height, I thought grade level and floor level is essentially the same thing, but it's not.
Yeah, you can determine height by using lowest point of existing grade next to the building. You can, you can go to the midpoint of the roof.
Just as an interesting thing, one, a variation of this that I saw when I read the code from another place is they made the determine based on the property line closest to the building. So they were sensitive to the fact that if it sticks up higher out of the ground, but it's toward the interior of your property, that's different than it sticks up high off the ground if it's within four feet of the neighbor's property. So things to consider.
Well, maybe I'll ask the city council if we can discuss it and it'll be on our next work session.
I would involve Nate, the on the grounds people on this one and so.
I agree with that. I need to note that. Anything else, Lou?
That was enough for me.
Greg? Darren?
Just a few things since I've failed to do my duty recently following a local, a adjacent city you're, nearby and see what they're up to. I just wrote down a few things that the planning commission in North Ogden's been doing. One of them was they were, they looked at the site plan of a new subdivision at 1651 North Washington Boulevard, which is a storage unit development surrounded by townhomes. Lovely. I don't know that I'd want to live there. And then there's more construction or additional units being added and upgrades of storage units that lock it up safe, safe storage at 300 East 2000 North in North Ogden. And they modified their accessory building ordinance to change the roof pitch. Let's see, they had a public hearing regarding. Let's see, they had a public hearing regarding their ordinance on water-wise landscaping and they looked at a site plan for a park that's being built adjacent to a townhome development just north of Lee's Grocery Store in North Ogden. It's essentially, the park's essentially gonna be where the old fire station and the old public works used to be over there, so.
That is actually my project. And we gave them land to do a whole waterworks park.
Yeah.
So we're, they, we gifted them the well that was part of the property and they took it down and now they have, and it's a culinary-fed well, so it's like drinkable. And they're going to use it and they got a bunch of ramp funding to create this beautiful community water feature park.
Is that that Artesian well?
Uh huh.
Really? Wow.
Yeah.
Is it gonna hurt the stump?
No, it shouldn't hurt the stump.
It's not, yeah, it's not connected to the stump or something. Yep, it doesn't hurt the stump. Nope.
Don't hurt the stump.
Yeah, that's, that's a landmark.
Good work.
And then Lou, we got townhomes, so thank you. Just kidding. I don't have, I'm, I don't have anything to report. I'm not sure. We had development meeting last week and we just talked about some conform, non-conforming lots and some C2 stuff actually that is coming up on 2000. That's it. We've been so busy with the mixed use stuff. That's what we've kind of been bogged down with, so I don't have anything else to report. If there's nothing else, do we have a last motion?
Jason's not here, so I guess I recommend we go home.
Does he usually say it?
I rec, well, we, we raced for it, so I, I recommend we adjourn.
Motion by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Darren. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Yeah. For what? What do you mean?